All right, Mr. Kravman, you second that. Okay, so I will take a vote on that and ask that all those in favor of the motion as made, which would issue an entertainment license as requested for the days of Thursday through Sunday, the hours of 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., and with the restriction of acoustic music only on the exterior of the building, to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and I will cast my ballot in the affirmative as well, so that would make that unanimous. Okay, so you've accomplished what I think you set out to. I want to, again, you know, welcome you, congratulate you, we look forward to seeing your business open, and we hope that it will be highly successful. Most importantly, you heard from at least one of your neighbors, it sounds like you've talked to a number of them. I would encourage you, the last thing that any of us want to see is that we're back here having another discussion. It's the worst thing that can happen.
That was a what neighbor, what, I don't give a difference from the other side. We've left ourselves open for communication with everybody. Any person had a question or concern, we've tried to answer it honestly, and like I said, whether it's one of our neighbors or it isn't one of our neighbors, we'll work out everything with the call and tone deals. But like I said, like my son said, we'll get to the point, we'll get it where it's comfortable to them, and then go.
We trust you will, and we look forward to that, and I'm over there almost every week, so I'm sure I'll hear. So, you have a great night, thank you. Anyone else who was here for those hearings, thank you for taking the time to get out here tonight. Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
All right, we have a couple other hearings to move to, and I will ask representatives of Arbitt's Liquors to come forward as I read the hearing notice on this particular matter. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 138, on Tuesday, August 18, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. on the request of Arbitt's Liquors, Inc. by Joseph A. Arbitt, Jr., President, to transfer a stock to Joseph A. Arbitt, Jr. and Deborah Arbitt for the license to sell all alcoholic beverages as package store on premises described as one floor, two rooms, one for retail display, one for storage, and utility space with front entrance door and rear exit, two rear loading doors located at 1768 Main Street. The hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, temporary town hall 464 Main Street, Tewksbury, Mass. Input is welcome from the public. The Board recommends that comments be submitted in writing to the Board of Selectmen on or before noon time on Friday, August 14, 2015. So let me first welcome at least the three of you, Consulor, I believe, right? So if you would do me a favor and introduce everyone for the record, I'd appreciate that.
I'm a true to James Hall, representative of Joe Arbitt, Arbitt Liquors, and this is Attorney Nick Cogger, Pete Nickogger. He's representing the buyer.
All right, so we're going to take your issues for us, and then we have to do another hearing on yours, so we'll come back. You can take a break and relax.
No problem.
So, you're welcome to sit, make yourself comfortable, please.
If I could just approach the Secretary, Helen had called me and indicated there was a quarterly tax bill that just came out that had to be paid along with, I think, a water and sewer bill, so we have the paid bills here.
We've been informed, I think, Mr. Montor, are you satisfied with that? You can certainly submit that, thank you for that clarification. So I know there's a little bit of history, Consulor, to this transaction, so if you could, for the benefit of the public, just explain, you know, what prompts this request and what you're trying to accomplish, and then we can take some action.
Well, Joe's father, Joe Arbitt, Senior, started the store in Joe Arbitt, directly, I think, in the '70s. He has operated in Tewksbury, I think everyone knew, Mr. Arbitt.
Indeed.
And ran that store. Joey worked side by side with him for those 40 years, and unfortunately, Mr. Arbitt, Senior, passed away three or four years ago. And what we're doing now is actually to remove his name from the records of the town hall as managing, has got shares in the corporation, Arbitt's Corporation, also managing the store. And in Joe Senior's place, we would want to substitute Joe Junior, who's very experienced, but those 40 years helping his dad. We want to indicate that the shares that Joe Senior owned have transferred to Debbie, his daughter, 50 shares, and Joe Senior, Junior, has 50 shares. So we have new shareholders, we have to transfer those shares to the new shareholders, we have a new manager. And that's pretty much what we're trying to do. And once we do that, we're now in a position to sell the store. We can act as a transfer all, because we now have legal authority, and then we can participate with Mr. Nickogger's request after ours to actually transfer the store to the new owner. So in order to get it right, I think we have to go through this process.
Yep, and all of those requests have been made on this application as a single application.
It's a multi-application, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, okay, and I know for the benefit of my colleagues, Town Council has reviewed this extensively and had communication with the ABBCC, and has indicated that he has no concerns about the form or content for your benefit. So let me ask if you have any questions of Counsel.
No, I've reviewed everything, and I, obviously, everything's been signed documents where it's clear to me what his intent is for Arbitt, being sorry for this.
Okay. Gentlemen, okay. All right, so we'll make this easy, and I'll ask for any motion that members want to make relative to approval of these multiple requests, which are, as stated, identification of new shareholders, offices and directors, and transfer of stock and change of manager, if I have my thoughts correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Should we open that?
I will ask if there's any comments from residents relative to the transaction. Thank you for that reminder, getting rusty.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see anybody rising, so that brings us back to my request for any motions.
I'll move that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so that would make that unanimous for enough. Thank you, and thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, thanks, I'm going to have to leave. I have a town council in Drake, and we have a separate clock.
No worries.
But thank you very, very much.
All right. All right, I am enforced yet again to read another hearing notice, so I'm going to do that. Counselor, you stay there, if your clients are with you, please, they can come forward. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, on Tuesday, August 18, 2015, at 7:40 p.m. on the request of Arbitt's Liquors, Inc. by Joseph Arbitt, Jr., President, to transfer all alcohol packaged store license to Rishi, Inc., doing business as Arbitt's Liquors, by Reema Patel, Manager, on premises described as one floor, two rooms, one for retail display, one for storage and utility space, with front entrance door and rear exit, two rear loading doors located at 1768 Main Street. The applicant is also requesting pledge of license to Kamlesh Patel. The hearing will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, temporary town hall 464 Main Street. Input is welcome from the public. The Board recommends comments be submitted in writing on or before noon time on Friday, August 14, 2015. So, welcome again, Counselor. If you'd introduce yourself and your clients, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Peter Nicosia from Tinkborough, Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant, Rishi, Inc. I have with me today the two principals, sole stockholders, sole corporate officers, as well as the listed general manager of the license, Reema Patel and Crowe'sman Robbie Patel, who are here. Application's pretty comprehensive, it has all the necessary forms, it's got all the transactional data for the business transaction, what the intended occupancy of the premises is going to be, all the corporate data, a lot of personal data on these individuals as well.
Yep.
Essentially, it's going to be business as is, there's not going to be structural changes, you know, probably just some new energy cleaned up a bit, you know, sort of revitalized, but same hours, same services, same everything, just new faces. The Patels, you know, understand that this is a privilege and not a right, and they've been well advised by me about the local and state regulations on liquor service. Mr. Patel has experience with Broadway Convenience in Drakeett, Massachusetts, that operates with liquor retail sales there. He's had good experience at that location as well, so he's got some hands-on training that he can impart to Reema, who will be the principal here at this location, will be forward. We'll have tip certification deposited with your Selectmen's Office before we, or at the same time we pick up the license, so that you have that on file. And they're looking to, you know, be a good business partner for the town. They want to have a good reputation, conduct a good business, not give you any problems, and they don't want to be back in front of this board on violation counts.
No, that's the last thing anybody wants.
No, no, I'm sure.
Did I understand you correctly? I think I did, but your clients intend to operate their Drakeett Enterprises and this concurrently?
Yes, Robbie Patel is the primary operator of Drakeett. Reema will be the person.
Here in Tewksbury.
Here in Tewksbury primarily. You'll see them both, but together, they'll be operating both locations, yeah, passing ships tonight.
There you go.
My understanding, and I forgot this, truth be told, is that Tewksbury doesn't allow pledges of their licenses, so we'll withdraw that request.
Yep.
So that's a non-issue. You know, it's a family member that's involved in the financing, so we have a little more flexibility there than a conventional bank.
Yeah, we have a practice of not doing that, I was going to raise that, but.
It's not an issue. So, we're looking for the transfer to be approved, Reema will be listed as the manager of the license, and we're open to any questions that you have.
Okay, anyone have questions?
I'd just comment, I can see that they're in good standing for task compliance and everything, so it sounds like everything's been touched, basically, in touch with the board tonight, and I wish you well. I know there's some vacant property beside Arbitt's, is that something that they're going to, can they expand to that area, or is that just?
I don't think there's any present plans for that right now. I think we're looking to confine ourselves to the area that we're in, but we'll never say no. And if that's the case, we'd obviously have to come back here for a change of license description.
And I wish you luck, if you know adventure, I know the right of the street, and I know this is the word.
Okay, so I don't forget, let me ask if there are any folks here who wish to speak to this matter. I don't see anybody rising, so, all right, so we'll note for the record that Counsel, on his client's behalf, has withdrawn the pledge of license request.
Yes.
And with that being stated, the request to transfer the license, I want to take a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the license transfer, considering the pledge.
All right, we have a motion made and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that would give us a unanimous for the zero vote. Thank you, Consulor, thank you, and welcome. We look forward to seeing you down the street very soon.
Would the recording secretary like to talk to the newspaper?
That'll be great, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you all, we appreciate it, good luck again. All right, I see one member of our planning board here, Mr. Fowler, welcome. Oh, two, sorry, the eyes are going, Chairman Johnson. We, with your patience, we're going to just run through a few more business items before we come to housing, and we'll be right back with you on that. So I'm going to ask my colleagues to consider a couple other items on our agenda, moving to page two, and we'll move through that. Do you have a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
So you can set that up while we do this, okay? All right, so item number 10 on the agenda, you've got a request from the town clerk to make appointments for the election workers. This is for the term that would end August of 2016. You have a full roster, and I think Mr. Panellitis, you have a conflict.
Yeah, my wife is on the list, I want to recuse myself.
So you're recusing yourself, okay, go away for about 30 seconds. So the roster is presented to you in full, and again, this would be, as I stated, through August of 2016, so I'd ask for a motion on the slate, if you will.
Make a motion to approve the slate.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve the recommended list of the town clerk for election staff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that'd be three to zero, and the chair will note in the minutes that Mr. Panellitis recused himself from that vote. Next on our agenda is a disclosure by a municipal employee, that is Lorraine Carrier, who serves as a library trustee, an elected position. She is also indicating that she is serving in the capacity of a town election official. So that disclosure has been made, and I would ask the vote to acknowledge that disclosure by a vote to recognize that.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We also have a request from our staff. I believe at our last meeting, we made some appointments to the Mass. Cultural Commission, and we took those, excuse me, we took those votes, and I believe it was for one-year terms. We've since been informed that those terms by statute are three years, so I would like to just ask the Board to amend its prior votes on the individuals to reflect a three-year term, and then we'll make those corrections as necessary. I don't have their names in front of me, but they took those votes last month.
I think they're, John Buckley, Christian Stratus, right there.
It sounds familiar, okay. Oh, there you go. So if no one has any questions or concerns about that, I'd like to ask for a vote to ratify the appointments of those three individuals, but make a three-year term that runs through June 30. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, so that'd be 6:30, 18. All right, that brings us to Historic Commission appointments. As you know, gentlemen, we have five individuals on the Historic Commission whose terms expire or expired on June 30, and we're trying to clean up the proper expiration dates to comply with the requirements that exist, and we need to space these terms out. So I am informed, as you are, that of those five, there are four individuals who are Commission members, whose terms expired on June 30, 15. Eileen McDonough, Robert Hunter, Michael Herton, and Tom Churchill. We need to appoint, assuming you want to make appointments, we need to appoint two of those individuals for three years, and two of those individuals for two years. And then the last aspect of this is that the town historian, Mr. Warren Carey, has a term as the historian that expires June 30 of 16, and we need one member, he would be, as he has requested pursuant to the town's adopted bylaw, he was required to request reappointment to the Commission, and he has done so. So the option would be to appoint him, one individual of these five needs to be appointed for one year to coincide with the proper spacing of these terms. So his term as historian ends on June 30, 16, it kind of seems to me to be logical that we could appoint him to a one-year term, and next year, he would be potentially eligible for a three-year term as a Commission member. So I offer that up for consideration, and I'd ask for motions for two individuals for three years, two individuals for two years, one individual for one year. Don't all jump at once.
Can you say that again, two?
Two people need terms for three years, two individuals need terms for two years, and one individual needs a term for 12 months or one year. Can be any combination of those people.
Mr. Chairman, are there any preferences on these people, whether they want two or three?
We asked all of them to express a preference, and essentially, all of them said that they would be willing to do whatever you deemed appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, reappoint Mr. Carey for a one-year term to end on June 30 of 2016. I'm trying to find their last names, Herton and McDonough, for two-year terms.
Okay.
And then Churchill and Hunter for three-year terms. Based on the emails that they've returned to our offices, that seem to be what they were looking for.
Yeah, I see McDonough mentioned one year, two years.
All right, so we have a motion made to reappoint Mr. Carey to a one-year term ending June 30, 16. That's to the Commission, not as historian. The historian appointment, I believe, rests with the town manager. And then you mentioned Michael Herton and Eileen McDonough for a two-year term that would expire June 30 of 2017.
Yep.
And then we have Robert Hunter and Thomas Churchill, three-year terms which would expire June 30 of 2018.
That's correct.
Second to that motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose to the one-year term for Mr. Carey.
So the motion made was on all of them, Mr. Gay, so do you want your?
Then I will vote no.
Okay, so you're voting no. Okay, thank you. And the chair votes aye as well, so that would be three in favor, one opposed. We move on. We have before us a request by the Salvation Army. They are holding a cycle Merrimack Bike Event on September 12, and that involves various communities in the area. A portion of travel on the road bike race will come through Tewksbury, 1.8 miles of Tewksbury roads, which involve Boilston Street to North Billricka Road and onto High Street. There is a map attached, this has been reviewed by our Public Safety Officer, Officer Welch, and I believe signed off on by our Public Safety Chiefs, both police and fire, and there appears to be no concern. Again, that's on Saturday, September 12, so there will be some traffic interruption on those streets that I mentioned. I'd ask for a motion from a colleague to approve this event.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
A motion made and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Next on our agenda, we have an application for a common vixula license. This is pertaining to what was the Tedeschi Food Shop at the other end of town, and the letter that you have dated August 9, 2015, indicates that there's some consolidation of Tedeschi Food Shop licenses into a newly formed subsidiary called TFS NewCo LLC. The relicensing of the stores to the new subsidiaries in preparation for a future sale to 7-Eleven Incorporated. The closing date for the sale to 7-Eleven is scheduled for August 24, 2015. TFS NewCo LLC will remain as the store's operator and licensee after the closing date until the store is renovated by 7-Eleven later in 2015, at which time the stores will be rebranded as 7-Eleven stores and franchised. So they are asking for a license transfer, Tedeschi Food Shop, number 37501, to TFS NewCo LLC. And I would ask for a motion to approve that, if you're in agreement.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Mr. Montor, I'm going to come back to you later, if that's okay? So let me just move, last item before we go back to our housing. I'll turn to Mike Clark, you have minutes to present.
Yes, we distributed the minutes for July 14, regular executive session, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Okay. Any questions on the minutes, concerns? Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'll say aye, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I will vote in the affirmative, that would be three votes in favor and one abstention, Mr. Gay. Those are approved. All right, so that leaves us with the town manager to report, and board member reports, we'll do that after we tackle the next agenda item. So I want to welcome and invite members of our planning board to come forward, if they wish, and join us, entirely up to you. And Mr. Savick, good evening. Ms. Barrett, okay, and Mr. DeCuff, good evening, how are you? So, Mr. Montor, you want to do an introduction, maybe speak to us a little bit?
Just briefly, there's been a lot of discussion over the last few months regarding affordable housing, as well as housing in general, market rate development that's occurred, the potential future development, how we got to really empower that housing, how we're going to address affordable housing in light of that 10%, falling further below that 10% right now, about 9.6%, but as we continue to add housing, we're falling further behind that 10% threshold. We need affordable housing, it's evident in town, we need to do more to provide it. So we've had discussions in the last few months as a group, Steve Savick and I have had internal staff, the planning board has had discussions in the past, and so Steve, Savick, and myself thought it would be a good idea to bring it all together to have, we've termed a Tewksbury Housing Summit, as you can see through the nice diagram on the front page. Judy must have done that, Steve doesn't have that talent. We wanted all the bodies together to stop the dialogue, by no means is this an enemy kind of work to do with discussion to have, bodies, to have ideas working forward in the future, this is just the beginning of the discussion that we want to have. It's difficult to have the discussion without talking about history, without talking about the next steps, so this presentation is limited to that. Starts, not only have a discussion, but starts us thinking about where we want to go.
And before you do, I must be right-handed, because I just noticed Planning Board member Anderson's here, Fratalla's here as well, so I want to just recognize them on that side of the room. I saw Chairman Johnson, and mentioned him earlier, so I don't, is your fifth colleague here? I don't see Mrs. Reed, I just want to make sure I didn't miss her. Okay, all right, back to you.
So, we'll go through this slide presentation, both Judy Barrett and I have worked on this together, along with some assistance from the town manager, and then after that, we can probably have a dialogue as far as things that we see out in the future, that's really kind of the last slide.
Steve, can you also just introduce Judy, who she is?
Yes, so, good idea. Judy Barrett is with RKG Associates. She is currently a consultant for the town on the update to the master plan, which will be delivered within the next month. Judy did our master plan in 2003. Judy has worked for the town at Plymouth, for the Department of Housing and Community Development, and in planning circles is considered one of our go-to people when it comes to housing. She's put on workshops for planners in inclusionary zoning, and she's been very helpful throughout this process, so there's much more wealth of knowledge to the left of me when it comes to housing, and housing across the Commonwealth, so I'm happy to have her seated next to me. to housing and housing across the Commonwealth, so I'm happy to have her seated next to me. The topics to be covered this evening really is just how Tuxbury has grown, where our affordable housing fits into the housing development history here in Tuxbury, what Tuxbury has done to address the housing needs, manage development of affordable housing, and we've had two housing plans that have been done. One was based off the 2003 master plan, and then there was a rewrite that was done in 2012. And then what does Tuxbury need to do in the near future, which I referenced earlier, will be the last part of the discussion. So the history of housing development here in Tuxbury, I chose 1970 as a starting point because I think that was fairly relevant period of time of the 30 years that were covered from the 7th, 1970s to 2000. So you can see there that housing growth, there was a 94% increase from the early 1970s up to the 2000 census that was done. And during that time period, there was a significant amount of apartment condominium developments that occurred in town. What ended up happening is multifamily units comprised about 22% of the town's housing inventory. And I think Judy may be able to comment as far as where that is.
Yeah, I mean, it's, a lot of that occurred in the 1980s, which was very characteristic of the market at the time. We saw a lot of multifamily condominium development, old enough to actually remember. The mid-1980s, just before a backlash at the end of the 80s. So a lot of that development actually occurred in that decade, but you've also got the influence of 495. I think that several of the communities in your area probably can make the same claim in terms of just the amount of housing production that happened in that period, whereas when you get closer to 128, that bubble's a little earlier.
So that is 70s through 2000.
And all this is showing is just how, what you look like in relation to the larger Boston area, and I don't think there's any big surprise here. More of your housing was built since 1970, a larger percentage than in the Boston area or even really in the Commonwealth. So that's just what those bands of color are telling you. If you start at the red and look up, that's 1970 to 2000.
And so since 2000, Tuxbury has gained 1,111 new housing units. A number of these were multifamily units that were developed under Chapter 40B, and we did have a significant amount of those during the previous decade, from about 2003, 2004 onward up to 2010 is where we saw a significant amount of that housing. We also had some zoning changes that had occurred between 2002 and 2014, which created an intensification of residential development, which has allowed for 293 additional multifamily units to be permitted. And just in 2015, there's been 274 more multifamily units that have been permitted. And again, Judy can explain this.
Yeah, it's just, I just sort of added the, since 2000, and, you know, no surprise, you've just got a larger percentage of your housing that's new. Your median housing age here is much younger than the surrounding Boston area. So I think there's probably a good story in there to tell, and probably some issues as well, that clearly people want to live in your town.
So that, the history of affordable housing initiatives and development here in Tuxbury. So early on, most of our subsidized housing inventory was created through the Tuxbury Housing Authority. In 2002, the town's subsidized housing inventory was 4.05% of the total housing units in town. The town started taking action in 2002. Inclusionary zoning was put in place, which increased multifamily density from six, seven units per acre, and then required that 15% of the units built be affordable, or we allowed for a fee in lieu of providing those affordable units on site. In 2003, town meeting took action to create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund by special legislation. That makes Tuxbury a little bit unique in that the state came out with some regulations afterwards that allows communities to adopt model affordable housing trust funds. Ours predates that, so we have some, I think we have a little more flexibility in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund than other communities. Then in 2006, the town adopted the Community Preservation Act, and then we put into place the Affordable Housing Plan and Plan Production Strategy. And so all of those things, again, going back to about 2001, there was a land use committee that recommended the creation of Affordable Housing Partnership, and so Partnership was getting up and running and was working closely with the planning board to pursue inclusionary zoning, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think members of the planning board were the greatest champions of the Community Preservation Act at the time. Then the Affordable Housing Plan, again, was an initiative that was done in-house with the assistance of the Global Housing Partnership, and it was based off of the 2003 master plan that Judy Spurran completed for the town. So affordable housing from 2005 to 2014, comprehensive permits and subsidized housing contributed 550 units to our inventory, and 478 of those units were rental units. Everybody, for the most part, we all know that the large project on the hill was the lodge and it was pond, and there was 364 units there. But we did have some other rental projects. Village Green at 56 units, and then Baby Place, which I think was 22 units, if I remember correctly. So there was those types of projects that were ongoing during that time period. And then from 2005 to 2014, the zones, multifamily developments that were approved were 231 units, and that created 35 unit obligation for affordable units. Those units were all paid, the fee in lieu of during that time period, and so you can see there that we raised $1.8 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for those fee in lieu of affordable units on site. In addition, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund received $853,000 through transfers from CPA and payments from other types of developments. Those included some 40B developments were paying us for a market rate unit, which is kind of an odd way to do a comprehensive permit, but are.